Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lemmister School Committee. Today is Monday, September 17th. We're at Apple Seeds. We'd like to call the meeting to order. Could everyone please stand to say their pledge allegiance and the pledge is outside?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to read the Lemmister School Committee's statement and then we'll move on to the open forum. The committee represents the needs of all Lemmister Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemmister. We'll now open the public forum. If anybody wishes to address the committee, please come up, state your name and address for the record, please. Again, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward. And one last and final time, having no one come up, we'll close that portion of the meeting and we will move on to communications. Superintendent?
There are no communications this evening.
Thank you. And then we'll move right on to superintendent's report. Good evening. Ron, did you have something?
Yeah, could you also remember how we had talked about the policy?
Sure, I'm sorry. So, just to inform the public, if anybody wishes to record this meeting on their private device, you need to please identify yourself and let this committee know that you're going to do it prior to you doing it. So if anybody in the audience is wishing to do that, please acknowledge yourself now. Okay, no one has come forward. Thank you, Ron. Sorry about that, Superintendent? That's okay. You should be able to hear me. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming out tonight. After two full days of staff professional development, that was not only informative and engaging, but it was truly motivational. Lemmister Public Schools welcomes students grades one through 12 to our very hot buildings on August 29th. Our schools quickly ramped up their routines. We dealt with the heat and conducted business without fail. We have continued to register families in our parent information center. Since the first day of school, over 150 families, not students, 150 families have joined our system. The kindergarten class of 2035 is currently over 450 students. We ended last year at 400. This is exciting news, but due to the size and full-day programming, not all students can be in their district or neighborhood school, but we guarantee grade one, they will be in their district school. Transportation is a key factor right now that continues to be reexamined. As student populations and residency changes, our district office works, I would like to say daily, but it's really hour by hour, trying to work with families, secretaries, the bus company to better accommodate our families' needs and our neighborhood stops. Please remember, parents, that Wednesday is a half-day of school, so we need you on those corners to receive your students. The safety drop-off at Northwest School was activated on the first day, and this safety measure provides a secure central location to pick up your child should the need arise. Very, very few drivers have had to use it thus far, but as a community, our neighborhood stops are working out as well as possible currently, and we will continue to refine as the year unfolds. We also want to acknowledge the multiple sporting events already, Day 13, club activities. We have festivals, including the Johnny Appleseed Festival this weekend. We have brochures up front. We have multiple students engaging and participating in the event, so if you're looking for something specific, it's up there. And we would like to have a brag moment. This evening, come on up, Eric. Come on, you deserve this, buddy. We want to congratulate our senior, Eric Jennings, for having been named a National Merit semifinalist. Eric is a senior at CTEI's electronic class. He is also a member of the Devil Dogs robotic team and volleyball team. Did you just come from there?
Oh, no, I was actually taking care of his head.
Okay.
Doesn't matter, you're wearing the right color.
Over 1.6 million juniors in about 22,000 high schools entered the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2017 PSATs, which served as an initial screen of program entrance. The nationwide pool of semifinalists, representing less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors, includes the highest scoring in each state. The number of semifinalists in a state is proportional to the state's percentage of the national total of graduating seniors. The LHS and CTEI faculty and staff are proud and should be proud of the guidance and mentorship of this strong and accomplished student, and it's just another great day in Lemmister Public Schools to celebrate another student. Congratulations.
Nice job.
Very nice job. Congratulations. We're very proud of you. That's awesome. What's the next step?
So, there's a slight application for the finalist, National Merit Scholar. I think it's just an assay in like your grades and CTE score, so you just want to make sure that everything's in check. And I think most people advance that step, get the finalist award, so.
That's awesome. That's great. Very prestigious. What's your future? What's in your future?
Engineering, so probably electrical engineering, robotics especially.
What school are you looking at?
Pretty much just engineering schools. UMass Lowell, Carnegie Mellon, Air Force Cat is also on the list.
I choose the Air Force.
Me too. We'll just know that we're behind you 100%. We're very, very proud.
Good job, yeah.
Great job. That's wonderful. Congratulations. That's wonderful. That's it? Awesome. Okay, we're going to move forward to the introduction to the superintendent's coach.
Great. John? This is John Brackett, and he will be supporting me for the next three years as part of the MASs and DESI induction program for new superintendents, and he wanted the opportunity to come see the real us. And he has been in district, he comes in, he goes out, we talk on the phone, but wanted to have an opportunity to meet our school committee. So, welcome to the program.
Great, welcome. Thanks, thank you very much. I'll just give you a brief background on, you probably know a little bit about the program, but I'll give you a little bit more insight into what we're going to be doing over the next three years. As Paula said, I'm John Brackett, and I'm very honored to be able to work with Paula this year and to be working in Lemmister. I've been a superintendent for 22 years, and I think the reason that they hire people like me is to just show newer superintendents that there is life after the superintendent. So, the program, as Paula said, is three years. The goal of the program is very simple, is to make every participant in the program a successful superintendent. The objectives are basically three, and I'll just go over them very quickly. One is to support the further development of the leadership skills of the superintendent and to help them to begin thinking and acting strategically. The second one is to focus on the district's work around teaching and learning, and that happens through the development of a high-impact, highly-focused, three-to-five-year strategy, improvement strategy. And the third one is to develop the leadership capacity in the district by building effective leadership teams, forging strong leadership, or strong partnerships with the school committee, staff, community, and the respective users. Now, one of the things, given Paula is not really a brand-new superintendent, she and I will be modifying the curriculum a little bit, but not the objectives. The objectives stay the same, the goal stays the same, but we want to make sure that we're not, most of the people in the program are first-year superintendents. They started in July, and obviously, that's not the case here. So we want to build on what has already happened, taking the impetus of what she has done and move it forward so that we'll probably escalate it a little bit and keep things moving forward. Part of the things that we'll be doing over the course of the year is that she and I will attend eight different content, they're day-long content days, that have focused curriculum and require many, many, many important products. There's an expectation that she and I will work together for six hours a month at least, mostly in district, where we'll do school visits. I'll attend meetings like this one, attend leadership meetings. We'll go to schools and I'll tag along as she walks with principals and they do classroom observations, and then she'll be providing feedback to them, and then I'll just provide some feedback with her to, over the course of the year. As I said, I'll attend some leadership team meetings. And by the way, I had an opportunity, as she mentioned, to attend the network, the Leadership Network retreat, and I have to say that there was a lot of energy, excitement, and a number of the people who were there made it a point to tell me how excited they were and how motivated they were going into this year and being a part of this leadership team. Michael, I think you were there, right? Yeah, yeah. So it was a great start to a great year, I think. And then the last thing is, I'm available to her pretty much 24/7, and she knows that, and so if things come up and she wants an ear to talk through things, I'm available to support her, and I don't tell her what to do, I just help her to bring out those great leadership skills that she already has. So, I'm really looking forward to the year. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. Other than that, I know you have a full agenda, and I don't want to take up a lot of time.
Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Sue.
John, what district were you superintendent?
So I was superintendent for 12 years in Michigan and then moved here to Massachusetts, and I was superintendent for eight years in Sudbury. Then I did two interim superintendents, one in Weston and one in Watertown.
Anybody else?
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The commute back shouldn't be bad at all.
Good partnership. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is the food service presentation. Bob, if you'd like to come forward.
Hi, I'm just here tonight to talk a little bit about this CEP program that we received on August 23rd. CEP is a community eligibility provision, which is a USDA program, which means we must offer lunch and breakfast at no charge to all enrolled students for the next four years. It's based on how we get to that CEP percentage real quick, it's based on our direct certified list that we get from the state, and then it's divided into our enrollment, and then we use a multiplier of 1.6% to get to actually the percentage that we need. Each school must have their own percentage when we're doing this as well. Once we're determining, once we get these percentages, we can do one of two things. We can group as a district, or we can just group certain schools. And we chose to group certain schools because of the percentage that we need, that the state recommends that we need, to make sure our program runs at least at an even cost. So when we determined the schools, CEP-wise, the ones that are currently receiving CEP, I should say, Fallbrook Elementary School, Johnny Appleseed, Northwest, Francis Drake, and Priest. Unfortunately, we're not eligible as Lincoln, Bennett, Skyview, and Samoset, as well as the high school. However, during these next four years, we can reapply at any time during the year, either to get more schools on board or to get a higher percentage for the current schools that we have in the program. And like I said, the state does recommend that we be at least a 70% or higher, and currently, the grouping that we have right now are at 75%. If we were to group the full district, we'd be about 64, and that's below what they recommend. So we chose to group those schools because it gave us a good percentage. And like I said, for the next four years, we can look at it every year to determine if we can add a school to bring, or just to bring the percentage up that we need to be. And that percentage is basically our reimbursements. It's currently 75%, so it's pretty much, our reimbursements work where we'll get 75% of the free rate, for example, if we do 1,000 meals for today, we'll get 75% of that at the free rate, and then the remainder, the 25%, will be at a paid rate, where before CEP, we would get a reduced rate, a paid rate, and a free rate as well. But what we did notice, I know it's a short snapshot, but we did notice over the first two weeks that our percentages did go up. Breakfast, you know, we're feeding more kids now, which is great news for us. Breakfast last year at this time was about 32%, we climbed up to 48%. Lunch was at 61%, and we climbed up to, last year, we climbed up to 82%. You know, talking to other districts that have CEP, they hang around an 85, 90% rate, and you know, that's where we'd like to be as well. You know, and I've also received calls from parents about, you know, we have money in my child's account at these schools, how do we get that money back? We will refund the money. They could also use that money for alacott items, which are not covered under this particular program, so additional water, chips, and cookies, and things like that, they could purchase. Or if they want to, they choose to transfer that money to an older sibling that might be in one of these schools that don't have the CEP program, they can do that as well. And I did want to ask you guys if you had any questions about this whole program, and like I said, it is a four-year cycle, so we have it for at least the next four years. We will look at it and reapply, you know, if we can add schools or if we can, you know, get a higher percentage, because ultimately, you want to try to drive that percentage up to get more reimbursements. Because at the free rate, we get $3.43 per student. At the paid rate, we get 43 cents. So ultimately, we want to drive that free percentage rate higher so we get, you know, the higher rate to put back into the program. And just real quick, I also took last year's claim and, you know, looked at the claim to see what we got for reimbursements last year, and I did another claim with the exact same numbers where we would be CEP, we were CEP that year, and we broke out just about even. So that's good news. And like I said, you know, like I said, our ultimate is to feed all the kids and, you know, feed all the students here at Lemmister Schools to try to get this program to be great, so. Any questions?
So, did something go out to all the students at the start of the year to make sure that all the families are well aware of this?
Yes, I mean, that was kind of challenging for us because we got notified kind of late. You know, not that we dropped the ball, we applied for the program, and you know, there was a situation that happened, and some other people had to pick up the ball, and by the time we got it, and then we had to answer a couple of questions, the state said, "Okay, you guys are eligible as of August 23rd," which was probably about a month later. You know, superintendent sent out email blasts, she sent out a phone message, she could probably go into a little more detail than I can, but we got the message out, you know, put it on our websites, word of mouth as well, but you know, we saw, you know, people also, "Oh, I heard rumors, I heard rumors about this and that," and you know, they made phone calls to us, and we answered those as well. It was kind of a thrown-together thing, but I mean, you know, like I said, we kind of got notified at the last minute.
Nuna? I'm just curious as to why pre-K, which is Bennett and the pre-K at Samoset, which is probably called Lincoln School.
Yep.
They weren't included in it, because I was visiting Bennett this past week, and I think most of them would have qualified for that.
Yeah, unfortunately, we get that list from the state, Nuna, and you know, that list is, that's, you know, second goal, that's what it is. And when we take their percentage and divide it into the enrollment, it gave us a low percentage. And how it works is, they take the percentage from each school and divide it by the number, they don't take all the students. So like, if you know, one school was 50%, the other school was 100%, it would be 75% for both those schools. And like I said, one of the schools did bring us down a little, but we couldn't leave out one of the main elementary schools, and we felt we had to put that in. You know, we still, there's a decent percentage of 75%, so.
Do we look at it every year to see that we could get them in there?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're going to try to monitor monthly, you know, we're going to see where we are monthly. We can pull up this report on a monthly basis and just to see, because we do have to get the application submitted by April 1st, so we want to make sure that, you know, we got our ducks in line and stuff, and make sure everything is going forward. Because our ultimate goal is to try to get everybody on this program.
And so this is really based on folks qualifying for free and reduced lunch to begin with, correct?
More so direct certified, I mean, more so direct certified.
To make sure that families disclose.
Yeah, we get this, we get this list from the state. You know, we put it into the Gateway System, and it pushes out all the students that are directly certified, which could be, you know, foster kids, homeless, migrant, SNAP program, and stuff like that. So that list is generated from state, so you know, it's not about, you know, make sure everybody fills out a free and reduce app, and that's great, we still want people to do that, you know, especially for the oldest, you know, the secretaries, but they don't have to fill out a free and reduce apps at these particular schools because they're all secondary students.
I think it was Wendy and then... See, you sort of just answered one of my questions, so the schools that are getting it, you don't need applications?
No, that's correct, Wendy, you don't need applications.
When, you said it's the direct certified, so the students that aren't directly certified but still are eligible for a free and reduced lunch, that does not help the percentage?
No, it does not. The percentage of CEP, no.
Okay.
No, because like I said, that's, we generate that list from the state, and that doesn't change anything. We still want people to fill out applications, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, because my worry about that is sometimes that list misses people. I was down in the PIC recently, and there were some kids that should have been, and worried, so they had to be done manually, and I'm hoping that's not too many.
Right.
And it doesn't affect...
Right, and we got to cross-reference all of those when we, you know, run that list as well, to make sure that they're accounted for.
And then, so you can only reapply once a year, right?
Yep, April 1st.
If the numbers at the middle and high school come up between now and then, you have to wait until April, and then they would come in for next school year?
Yes, that's correct. We don't finish it. You know, we'll talk to, you know, the business manager of Paula as well, to determine if that's, you know, if it'll work for all of us.
Right.
Well, that's what we're hoping for, that's our ultimate goal.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
You already answered half of my question. You said that elementary students who finished last year with a positive balance could either get a refund or transfer to an older student?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I got the yes part. Could you tell me the how? Is there a form to fill out?
Absolutely. What they can do is they can call my office or they can email me. You know, they've been also calling the PIC Center, and they've been just redirecting them to me, and then I, we can, you know, take it from there. But yeah, if they can get in touch with the Food Service Director, Bob Burr, at Lemmister Schools, I'd be more than happy to help them out.
Right, great, thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
Just kudos to Chad Wells, because we did receive such late notice, and it was at noon, and Jen Monday and I were together, and I said, "I think he just got it." We found Bob down the hall, and within 20 minutes, we posted. And then I said, "Ooh, can we call somebody back just to make sure?" So then we just blasted, blasted, and we want to make sure that we hold on to this program and we grow it. So I've really asked principals at any occasion tonight, we have open houses, we need the paperwork filled out, we need everyone to stay on top of this, go to the PIC Center, talk to your building managers, because this would be monumental if we could do it district-wide.
Right, because like Wendy had said earlier, we may miss some kids, and we need to cross-reference those and make sure, especially with the CEP, make sure that we get credit, because you know, every student counts, every student counts, so.
But you've done a fantastic job.
Good.
That's wonderful, and for all of our students. Thank you very much. Thank you for the...
Oh, you're welcome.
That's very nice. We always like to invite you, Bob. We have to just make up excuses to have him come. Okay, so at this point, we'll move on to the report of summer school.
Hello, good evening. Don't be sad, but my slideshow's not happening tonight, and the music playing and everything. So this year, I took a little bit different role, I only had the, mainly at Northwest for the K through 5, getting ready for the garden, but also supervised the high school for recovery. So some of the input that you got in your packet is from all the programs, what is, who I had listed, and for, we had one page right here, I was going to pass it around to you guys, it's a rule I had left out by accident. So, just to give a quick summary of the program, summer school program, Lemmister Public Schools had students in Northwest, Samoset, Francis Drake, Skyview High School, CTE, Samoset, and On the Road with Starbase for the ELL program, so they were going out to MIT. We had a total of 1,400, 1,049 students participate in all the programs that we had, and when I was looking through from the data, once again, Bob did an excellent job of providing our breakfast and lunch for us at all our sites, and you can see that chart that was in the bottom. And so between all, from June to August, 20,758 breakfasts and lunches were served for the students of Lemmister Public Schools, which is phenomenal, so, and the kids could not wait to come in at 7:30 for that, big breakfast sandwiches and everything else they had, so it was very well-received by our students. Quick summary, at the K through 5 summer school program, it was an average of 206 students each week, and in the last week, we only have our 1 through 5, there was 128 students there that attended each day. Our specialized summer school program had 279 students from pre-K to high school serviced, and then, I guess I'm not going to re-read some of the summary pieces, but you saw the goals at each of the levels that they had. And so that was, pre-K, we had Skyview, we had Francis Drake with our K through 5s and our Life Scales, and we also had the high school. We had a fee for recovery, we offered English, that's the one I just gave you that was there, they offered English, 9 and 10, and grade 11 and 12. We had math, algebra 1 and 2 for both sessions, and geometry. We had science biology and general science, and we had history US 1, US history 2, and world history. We had 72 students attend for the recovery, and 14 of those students had to take two, a session of one and a session of two. 88% of our students there at the high school had, with one or less absences, so that was a good percentage of they actually came and participated, it was really nice to see. Our CTE, Dave Gadda was very proud that he had 40 students enter this exploratory program. He had 38 from Lemmister and two from West Boylston. As you can see, he was so thrilled that one of the twins that came had brought along his sister to participate. So yeah, just don't forget to mention that, Randy. I got it, I got it. So he wanted to make sure that even when someone came to the camp, that they were able to entice their sibling to come along too. So that was a four-week program, and they spent two days in deep shock as they rotated around. The Starbase Academy program this year was quite successful, we started a little bit earlier this year around trying to get students from all our elementary schools. This year, we went from six students that participated last year to 22 students who participated this year, so 16 more than last year. Treatment was provided for them to and from, and the breakfast was also covered by Bob, who had, they came for breakfast in the morning, and then they had bag lunches and pool of lunches for lunch on the way out. And then the Middle School 21st Century program, they serviced 115 students in a variety of different ways. You had, they had the credit recovery program also, and some fun activities that they had there with five different activities going on with different weeks and stuff like that. So there's some more data around that piece, and it tells you where our off-site people came from, where our onsite students came from, and the credit recovery. Great choices, I sent you. from, and the credit recovery. Great choices, I sent you, Wendy, when I asked for a little bit, she sent me that whole packet that you guys were able to see. And once again, she serviced, on average, 177 students from Lums Public Schools on a daily basis. They had their same, their breakfast and lunch, they had their activities for field trips every week, and their onsite activities, and they worked really hard around the community-based pieces and building some teamwork activities. And as you saw with the packet that I attached, I did not print any of that out or show you, too, but I didn't want her hard work to go unnoticed. Any questions around summer school activities?
Busy summer.
Very successful.
Go ahead, Nona.
With the credit recovery, did, you talked about the attendance, so 72, 72 students attended?
Participated, yes.
Okay, out of that, 72, how many, did they all meet and pass?
Yes, they did, except for one student.
One student, okay. How many, and you might not know this, because you were dealing with the summer program.
I don't know how many were reduced or not that.
I'm just wondering how many from the end of last year should have gone and didn't go, from either the middle schools or the high school?
Yes, so the middle schools, everyone that was supposed to attend, as you saw with the credit recovery at the Skyview, we had a lot participate there, and I think that every student that was supposed to be there, if I look at the numbers again, that attended the summer school credit recovery at Skyview. They were really good about San Jacinto, Skyview, being proactive about getting those students there and helping with moving that on. Actually, one of them was one of my own student's parents who actually helped, asked me about that, and she was really excited about the kids we're to. As far as, you know, freshmen through the 12th grade, I don't know the original enrollment, you know, original number of names that was put out there. I do know that in the freshman class, it was like 54 names that needed to have something, and they mostly gathered about two-thirds of those students to attend some schools. So I didn't get that list of the upper, of the upper students who needed to-
So if you know that those, those freshmen that didn't come out of that 54, are they having to repeat the grade, or?
I think that you might have to ask Steve that.
Not necessarily, no, I don't have the statistics in front of me, but there's wiggle room in a four-year, you know, you can take up to 280 credits, and our requirements are 250. So if it's one failure, you can double up, so like if it's a freshman English. You usually don't double up till senior year, to be honest with you, because you push it, you know.
I just hate to see them get to senior year, and then you say, "You're not going to be able to graduate."
Yeah, so the reason why most wouldn't attend is family vacation plans, and usually it's an extensive vacation, you know, with our international community. It's usually that they're leaving, it's not that they, you know.
No, and they, and they did speak about that. Most of the seniors that did have an issue or whatever, participated in the piece. So it wasn't, there was only a few, like he said, with the circumstances of that, they were traveling with their families outside. And it is hard because of the limitations they have around the attendance. And I mean, if a family says they want on vacation, it's hard for us to ask the 15-year-old, you know, freshman to stay home while their parents, because their parents aren't gonna keep the freshman home. So they go. And I know the school works really hard, the guy else is really working hard on that with them guys.
Like I said, I just don't like seeing them wait till senior year and say, "Now you're really in a, you know, you're up against a rock and a hard place to be able to graduate."
Steve?
The ingenuity piece has allowed us to have some flexibility during school years.
Good.
Yeah, I think that will help a lot.
Anybody else have any questions?
Go ahead, Sue.
Paula, can we get that financial report on summer school?
Sure.
I think that's important, to see, you know, how many staff, how many students.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward, we're gonna talk about the AP scores next.
Good evening, everyone. I'd ask Steve to come on up for me, so if you have some specific questions that I don't have the answers to, he may be able to help us with that. And certainly, if not, we can get those answers and get them back to you. You did receive in your packet a summary with some data that showed the five-year school scores on our APs compared to the state of Massachusetts and globally. So you'll see that we have a tremendous increase in the number of students and in the number of exams or the number of courses that were taken between the year span from 2014 to 2017, and then at 2018. So just information that you provided, there was an increase of 50 students between 17 and 2018, and then an increase of 129 actual courses and exams. So I will let you know that over the past few years, at the high school and even in the middle schools, we made a concerted effort to be getting students ready for AP or for honors of the coursework in their junior and senior year. And it seems to be paying off with more students taking advantage, more students putting themselves out there to take these high-level courses. And so we're very pleased that that's been happening here at Lemnster High School and CTEI. The piece of information I gave you tonight was just to give you a breakdown of what the courses are that students are taking. We have, at this point, 15 staff members who provide AP-level coursework. And we also have the ability to provide low-incident courses through our virtual high school. We have 25 slots for virtual high school courses, and predominantly, those courses are AP courses that we do not have a full group of students who would be taking them, some of the low incidents.
I know, like, for instance, chemistry, there's different levels?
Yes.
So those would be maybe the low-incident ones, because are we just teaching one level of chemistry?
We have a course, a chemistry, AP chemistry course, and then there are, this, this year, I'm not sure about which ones last year, but this year, there are two students who are enrolled in virtual high school chemistry at a different level, because there's a A, B, and C here. Correct, same with physics.
Yep. Does anybody have any questions specifically around the AP? No, no?
On, on this document that you gave us, the figures you gave us, I'm looking at 2016, which would have been the 2015, 2016 school year.
Correct.
We took a dip that year. That was not the budget year that we had the crunch in. That, that would have been, that would have been the 2016, 2017 school year that we saw that budget issue. So I'm wondering, would you know why we took a dip that year, that we went down to 57.3 of total AP students with scores three and above? I mean, that-
So what you're pointing to is the percentage of our total AP students with a score of three plus.
Right.
It's difficult for us to, to use this data as trend data, because every year, this cohort of students is a different group of students.
No, I understand that, but if you look, I mean, if you look at all the different other categories, I mean, total number of AP students, we stayed, we stayed the same, or within two or three of the same number, with the exception of 2018, which we had a significant increase, which I was glad to see. I just, I just was kind of surprised. And you, and you see number of exams. We dropped down in number of exams, so are kids not, I mean, you had the same, you had the same number of students from 2015 to 2016, but you dropped down in number of, in number of exams taken. Are we not insisting that kids take it and offering ways for them to pay for their exam?
So I believe that what this is showing, the total AP students and the number of exams, shows us that there are, the number of our students were taking more than one. So they would take two, maybe three, actual AP courses and then exams.
And that, and-
So, yes, there was a dip in 2016, so there were less students taking more than one AP course and then taking the exam at the end of the course.
And then the other thing is, I had spoken to you about getting the data, the last time, the last time we received data, which I was surprised at, was the 2015, which would have been the 2014, 2015 school year. That, for some reason, it got, it got by us. I can understand the 2016, 2017, because we were heavily involved in working out a sustainable budget that year, and that went well through the summer, and we didn't get figures on that. But I was just surprised that we didn't get it for 2016, we didn't get it for 2017, and now here we are with 2018 data. So I am asking if we can, if we can be furnished with that information that I had requested.
Sure. And in regards to 2016, at this point, I don't want to speak to that, but Steve and I will certainly take a look back. We can review historical information.
I think, I think if you print out the report that I had requested, which was five-year school, school score summary, it would give you all those years. So I, I don't need you to try to look back and try to figure it out. You just give us that one, I think it'd be good.
Mike?
I just wanted to mention that if you're, you know, each of these years is essentially a sample, that's, the percent's gonna fluctuate from year to year, just, there's some randomness to this. If we were doing exactly the same thing, so that the real number isn't changing, some, just, then you would expect with the sample size we've got, a plus or minus of about 7 percent from year to year.
Well, my concern is twofold. Are we encouraging students to take AP courses that are, you know, that should be taking AP courses and choose maybe to not take it, you know, they'll just stay in honors courses? And are we, are we furnishing our teachers with the right type of supplies in their classroom, the right type of, excuse me, the right type of opportunities to take courses, to learn more about the AP exam that, and they're giving, like I notice, I know at the end of last year, we approved, the finance committee approved money to send teachers to workshops. Only two went. I, I, I'm wondering how we can thus serve our teachers and serve our students?
And they do provide professional development and training during the summer. Steve was looked into some of that information for me. We have some that are done at Fitchburg State, but that's a limited course type. And there are some that are held in-
St. John's.
St. John's, Vermont, and I believe there's some also, maybe in New Jersey. So it's a good, it's quite a commitment on the part of a staff member to attend, and it takes a long time. It's between seven days, seven days that they're responsible for attending in the summer. There's a lot of other responsibilities that they have, both professionally and personally. So some years, we've had up to five or six people taking advantage. We've got a pretty steady cohort of staff members who have been trained and are still with us, thankfully. And so we haven't had too many new staff members come on yet.
I could just speak to your first question. Are we encouraging them? I think the latest year, that's exactly what we're doing, is encouraging.
It's good, yeah.
Yeah, so it just, that's-
No, I think that's very evident with the numbers there.
And I think, you know, all students who take the AP classes should be encouraged and expected to take the AP exams.
There's a very rare occurrence that a kid doesn't, if they take the course that they have.
I know, Ron, and then Sue.
If I remember correctly, three or four years ago, if you look in the archives of discussions we had at this table regarding AP and the honors, I'm telling you, there was some discussion, there were some students, they, they opted out from doing AP because it was gonna infringe upon their level with the honors class. Check the archive, I'm not making this up, guys. There was a big discussion, there were on the table back and forth, and there were some kids, maybe with their guidance counselor, they opted out of the AP, because some kids, some kids, or their parents, or the teachers, or whatever, whichever you wanna write it, felt it was too heavy for the kids, or not heavy enough, but it was gonna impinge upon their role or their, where they stood in the honor. This is about three or four years ago.
Can you answer, Ron, a little bit of that?
Ronnie, I'm thinking that a lot of that had to do with scheduling, and at that time, we didn't have a lot of the virtual high school and edgenuity that we have nowadays. So some students couldn't, because an AP class is only scheduled one time in one spot, so they couldn't take it at that time.
Because it might have conflicted with other classes that they needed to take.
That they needed to take, right, so I'm-
It just has a way of developing lives, and all of a sudden, sure.
No, we should encourage, but we can't force.
Right, and you know, it's just, I'm just saying, the whole discussion, I feel like it already has happened, these discussions in the past.
I know, but right now, with edgenuity and with the virtual high school that's in place at the high school, I think there's AP courses out there that can be taken.
Just more opportunities.
Does that mean-
Sue, I wanna piggyback on what Ronnie said, he's correct, a couple years ago.
Noon, damn it.
We had students, we did have some, we had courses, and I think the administration didn't realize that we had a policy that any student taking an AP course must take the exam. So there was a lax in enforcing taking the exam. And we clarified that a couple years ago.
I would say it's probably like five years ago.
And we also, I, I'm just gonna say, I don't know about anybody else, but I did get a detail of AP courses by topic. So I'm sure if you look in your archives, I know we sat here and questioned it. This looks like a state report.
We got it right here, but, but it did, but it was from 2015. We haven't received one since then.
I don't have that report.
Isabel first, and then you run. Can we pay attention to Isabel?
Speaking for those who have recently taken an AP test, relatively recently, AP classes are hard, and they're a lot of work with extracurriculars or senior year. So it's a commitment, and I took two, and I passed, and it was great. And it's now part of my college transcript, which is fantastic, so I encourage every student to try and do their best. But if they can't do it, they can't do it, I get it. But these numbers are fantastic for 2018. I think this is, this is great. I, I'm so impressed. I'm impressed. The number of students taking AP courses is fantastic. Because when I was there in 2016, I'm, I'm on, I'm one of these numbers. Yeah, I'm one of these numbers. I'm just really, so I'm in the AP students with three plus on here. But no, the numbers are great. I, I really appreciate this.
Round to two, Ed.
Yeah, I do, I'll piggyback on Sue's comment, and also buttress a little bit on Nona's comment. And then, because I wanted to ask this question, when they were talking earlier about kids who, the recovery program, and then someone talked about ingenuity and virtual classes. And with the A and P classes that- And with the A and P classes, that, not Israel, Isabel was talking about. I've got her name.
Here.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I know. Could you use the virtual learning classes for the recovery? You know how you were saying that when kids go on vacation...
They do that.
Yeah, they do that. But you're off time, since we're talking about AP, but yes, they do do that.
I know, but they were saying, when, when the parents go on vacation, the kids, they're saying they can't keep the kids here, but they could send them with their stuff, because they could do the stuff on Skype or on their, on their, on their, on their tablet. No, yes?
Yes, Ron, there are an awful lot more opportunities and ways that we can help the younger people today, whether it's during the summer or during the school year. So, yes, you are correct, that with some of the technology that we're using, we're able to provide them with those opportunities in a way that they are going to be successful. So, you're correct.
So, it could be done?
Yes.
And is there, and I'm going to stop.
Yep.
Is there a cost to this?
Oh, yes, there's a cost to us.
Yeah.
I know there's a cost, but is the cost indentured to the study, for the recovery, or the AP, or fill in the blanks? Help me with this.
So, we have a subscription...
Am I, am I, you don't want to think of this?
Ron, let her answer.
We have a subscription to edgenuity that we are using at the district, we have a certain number of seats. That is a cost that we are bearing in order to provide these opportunities for young people, especially if they're not successful the first time around, because we want them all successful and all to graduate on time with their class whenever possible. So, yes, in the summer, we have been, we, we are getting back some of the costs, because it's a credit recovery and support fee, summer school, so the students pay a small amount to take those courses, but we do have that opportunity in the spring as well.
Dean?
I was just going to say, I agree with Mike. This is going to fluctuate, three to five to seven percent. I think what's important is that the staff is working with the students, so they're making the best decisions that they can. I think it was stated earlier, she decided she was going to do two or three courses or whatever, that was a decision she had to make. Every family and student has to make a decision. Our job is to make sure you have the, the tools, and we need the assurance that people are being encouraged when necessary. And we're not just trying to get the numbers up, but we're really looking at the whole student organically or holistically to say, this is, this might be a really good move for you, or in some cases, as Ron talked about, for some students, they might decide, there's just a whole lot going on in my life at this point, maybe there is, there's, you know, so that's the reason we're going to see the fluctuation. All I wanted to hear is that the students are being encouraged when necessary, at least there's dialogue and conversation about whether that student should take this on the AP courses. I don't think we should look to just run up the data to say, you know, we have 500 kids taking AP. I think it really has to simply something that's beneficial for everybody, if it works for the student. If it doesn't, then, as, as you said, there are other tools we have in the chest now to sort of add to the mix, so that the outcome is really what we're looking for, right? The overall outcome later on. So, you're right, we're going to get three to five to seven percent difference year to year, and I don't think it's anything to panic over, but it's good discussion.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I want to be pressing out the superintendent's agenda. Ron, could you make sure that Peter gets one? And put any on the, and at least anybody else would like one. You're getting them, it's coming around.
Okay.
So, we had talked about, at our last meeting, the superintendent's evaluation. We just needed to add in sort of a, one more evaluation that came a little bit after the fact, so we did do that. So, we want to go through this. But basically, you know, the superintendent was rated on instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And so, if you, the first page talks about sort of the rubrics that that's measured. The second page is sort of the breakdown of percentages, and hopefully, my math is on target, plus or minus. But as you can see, for instructional leadership, it was a 50-50 split between...
Your balance was perfect, yeah.
Excellent. Phew, the easy stuff. Proficient and exemplary, so it was, for those that responded, it was 50-50. For management and operations, you can see that more folks responded with the exemplary than the proficient, and it was seen split for family and community engagement. And then professional culture, again, it was a higher split for exemplary over proficient. So, overall, the superintendent had a very stellar rating, and folks were pleased with her first year, or it wasn't quite a full year, but her first foray into spearheading our district. So, we were very pleased with that. What we did is just sort of list out the evaluator comments. A lot of people said something along the same similar plane, so we just sort of did some bullets. Forward-thinking, student-focused, clear communication with students, peers, staff, and community, transparency, visibility at events, approachable, fiscal accountability, utilize all sources of revenue, fair, equitable budget, line item budget, end fiscal year without a deficit, hard work to resolve negotiations, restructured central office, security-focused, community involvement, goal-driven, improved communication with the city side was one recommendation, and work on professional culture within the school district was another recommendation. So, these things were shared by pretty much, you know, everybody in the community, everyone and said it sort of in a little different way, but there was very clear themes and trends. So, I think overall, you know, the committee was very pleased with the superintendent's performance last year, and we look forward to another strong year this year. You will be providing us with your goals moving forward, and we'll do a mid-year evaluation and then an end-of-the-year evaluation. Last year, we just did one because she kind of came partway into the year, and there really wasn't enough data to, you know, do a midterm sort of evaluation. Do you have any questions or anything for the committee?
No, I wanted to say thank you. The support has been overwhelming, and on those days that people don't think, I'm enjoying this job, I truly am enjoying this job. And I love the team that I'm working with, it really, I enjoy Monday mornings again. So, thank you.
Great. Does anybody on the committee have anything they'd like to add? Wendy?
I just want to say, all of this is based comments are spot on, but I want to say the first piece of feedback that I got from people that reached out was, my emails and phone calls are being answered. So, families really, really appreciated, even if the answer, I don't know right now, but let me find out, getting some sort of feedback and response when they felt they had a problem was so appreciated right off the bat. It was the first noticeable thing that people commented.
Anybody else have something, Nona?
I was going to talk about under new business, but I'll say it now. This past week, I went to seven schools, I visited seven schools, and each and every school virtually said the same thing. It is refreshing to work with this superintendent. She gets back to them. They're looking forward to a good year. They started off with a good year, they had a great opening, and I believe that's due to your hard work.
And a good support team as well, I just acknowledge everybody is.
Yes, yeah.
But under your guidance. Anybody else have any thoughts or things? So, at this point, we need...
She did give us our group goals last time.
Oh, okay, address the goals.
Yeah.
So, at this point, can I have a motion to accept the evaluation?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
And Wendy has a second? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you. Shayne? All right, going forward, we're going to talk about conflict of interest declarations. I knew it was on our agenda last week, and it was more pertaining to staff, but this time I want to make an opportunity for everyone on the committee who may have a conflict of interest to please come forward, and I'll start. My husband does do scorekeeping and bookkeeping for some of the sporting events, so I did file my conflict of interest with the city. Isabel?
May I go next?
Yep.
So, my daughter, Marsha Shattuck, is an EMT. She has been for three years, and she works several of the Leominster Public Schools' sporting events. So, I wanted to make sure that was out there.
And my wife is a teacher here at the high school, it's her second year.
I'm boring, I've got nothing.
Isabel? My mom is a kindergarten teacher at Gransville Street, and my sister substitute teaches at the elementary schools on her vacations from Ostershaw State.
Okay, Ron?
My son provides liquids to the teams.
We'd like to say water.
Water, all right, water.
Let's clarify, what kind of liquids we're talking about?
Water. This is like when you went to school.
It was water.
Waters to all the athletic teams in the district, and he's been doing that since, since he was in the Navy. He'd come home, if the ship was at port, he did a drive or fly, and he's, he was insisted on doing, and he's been doing it ever since.
So, is that a volunteer thing?
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's mine.
Because...
Nona? And I know the mayor said I didn't have to do that, but I felt it was important. I did file the conflict of interest form concerning that my grandson is in the electrical shop here, and he does live with us.
Great. All right, thank you, everybody. I just wanted to make sure that that was out there. And for anybody who hasn't filed the form with City Hall, I know they couldn't locate the form at one point, but Dean's office, Wendy was able to get it, so if anybody has any questions, she's the person to...
In any case, you think, even if it might be the slightest potential, like the internal conflict, you can always call the Ethics Commission, ask for the attorney of the day, and that's between you and them.
Yep.
And you can never go wrong. Sometimes you might get two different people that might tell you two different things there, just keep a copy of whatever it is, if you could get a copy out of them, because one might say yes, and the other might say no.
Just get a third and average with it?
Usually, they're pretty good, and they're very responsive.
But either way, just, it's always best to ask, get an answer.
And the form is online.
All right. Having gone through that, we're going to go to...
That's just a clue.
Yeah. We're not just having anything to discuss. And we're going to go to subcommittee reports, policy?
So, we didn't, we took a pause in revising our handbook to take a look at our contacts between staff and students, but we're still fine tuning that and cleaning up language and getting information from legal, so as soon as that's ready, we'll conduct that.
Great, thank you. Finance?
Finance, we met last week. Now we have some blocks to approve.
Yep. Always poor Nona.
She likes those big numbers.
Should have been ordered, though.
Do you want, I have the... No, I've got it here. Okay, so, warrant, warrant 48 was for $14,182.75. Warrant 49 was for $2,550,562.95. Warrant 50 was for $419,875.43. Warrant 51 was for $9,463,962.25. Warrant 52 was for $503,547.13. Warrant 53 was for $312,987.2. Who is the two cents? Warrant 54 was for $429,140.73 from grants and revolving funds. Warrant 48 was for $16,843.18. Warrant 49 was for $629,746.41. Warrant 15 was for $347,280.79. Warrant 51 was for $890,057.22. Warrant 52 was for $378,789.70. And warrant 53 was for $91,288.98. And there was none from the, that category for warrant 54.
Can I pause for a second? What we've done so far, those are the final ones for last.
Right, yes.
What's coming up at the beginning of this year?
Yes, and for the beginning of this year, warrant one for $134,869.91. Warrant two was, there were no expenses. That was crossing guard salary transportation, there were no expenses. Warrant three was $354,576.21. Warrant four, $17,635. Warrant five, $608,66.87. Warrant six, $182,752.26. Warrant seven, $404,91.87. Warrant eight, $275,785.88. And grants and revolving funds. Warrant one, $32,999.99. Warrant two, $299,400.36. Warrant three, $503,168.70. Warrant four, $55,849.41. Warrant five, $152,325.82. Warrant six, $115,845.17. Warrant seven, $193,848.61. Warrant eight, $88,572.8.
Phew. Do we have a second? All those in favor? Opposed?
I missed some of that, can you do that again?
A motion carries. All right. Is that all from the Finance Committee?
We have an action coming.
We did this, so as part of indirect charges, as they're called, also called the C chargebacks. We're supposed to have an indirect charge agreement, which is technically between the administration and the mayor's office. At our last meeting in June, it was suggested that school-side proposed, so we have been shown, and it's in our packets, a proposed indirect charge agreement. As I understand, the next step is, if you're from City Hall, if they find that acceptable, a lot of change, so it's part of the process. So, we have that, so I don't know if you want to take a look at that now or later.
It's quick, it's quick. But we'll just have to respond, make sure that we reconcile, if that's all. But like, one of the things I noticed in here was that there's no, on the school recess office and some of these things in here, so we'll just respond to it. It's easy to just go bullet butt, go and respond.
So, it might make sense to wait until we get a response back from City Hall to just, I mean, unless there's something, you know, specifically...
I mean, once somebody saw something in there, they wanted to respond to or ask about...
Especially if there's no response yet. I think once we see both sides, like what you sent and what their response, then we'll actually have some...
So, talk about it. I agree. Thank you very much for the Finance Committee, for putting that together.
Thank you for all the time you guys put in.
We just wanted to talk about it.
Yeah.
Give some feedback, yeah.
Could I just go back to the HR report? It's Unit B that has principals and assistant principals, isn't it?
Just assistant principals.
So, just because we've had so many changes, temporary, can you just give us a quick, don't go spending too much time with this, like who's where, and what principal, are they acting, are they permanent, what's their contract? Anything that you can give us without making this a week-long project? And if, if that's the case in terms of a big project, then you can call.
You just want to lose everything?
Just who's where, yeah. When we met in air-conditioned auditorium in one of the hottest days in the school opening, clearly, there's a whole lot of people in a whole lot of places, this, this confusing. Good, it's good stuff, but it's, it's just confusing as to who landed where.
We have some road maps already laid out for you, so it's easy.
So, don't do anything more than that, that's fine.
Just send them over.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right, approval of the minutes, Wendy?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the August 20th meeting.
Second? Second.
All right. Any comments, omissions, errors? No? All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We move down to action items. We have to vote on the OEA contract. So, that is something that has been presented to us. And we discussed in the executive session, and we were waiting for it to be ratified by the union, which has happened. And we just need to take a vote. So, if someone would like to make a motion?
Can we just go over it for the public's benefit?
Sure. I mean, it's lengthy, but I think probably the biggest thing to, I guess, announce is that there was a lot of hard work on both negotiating sides. And people really came together to really work out what was in the best interest of all, all parties involved, to come up with something that was fair and equitable, given our financial situation. And the contract is for 1%, 1%, and 1% over the next three years, which is, you know, wonderful that we were able to do that. So, I think that's the biggest budget implication. I think there were other things in there that had to do with, and maybe if you haven't had enough to summarize.
I'll address, I'll address one of them that I think is really huge, is that over the next three years, there'll be a committee form to work with, a committee form based on administrators and teachers to be able to implement the, just the portal- The portal for parents to come in and look. It'll start, it'll be implemented, they'll work on it this year to open it up at the, at the beginning of next year for the high school and middle schools. And then, in the third year, it'll be open for the elementary.
So, that'll be great.
So, I think that's huge, and we worked hard to get that.
I think there was some shifts in, you know, days and attendance, kinds of things that benefited, you know, teachers and the school system at large.
But we were able to keep commitment to steps and lanes in addition to the-
Yes.
Okay. So, everybody's there.
All right. So, having said that, Nona?
I'll make a motion to accept the LA, OEA contract as presented.
Do I have a second? Wendy?
Yep.
All those in favor? Opposed? And we have two abstentions due to a conflict of interest. Thank you. Motion carries. The next contract that we need to vote on is the secretarial contract. And again, that was something that we had discussed previously, and we were waiting for the union to ratify, which they did. So, again, do you want to give just a brief update?
Well, I wasn't part of that.
Oh, you weren't part of that?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
So, similar to the teachers, we have a three-year commitment at a 101. They were, they're very amenable. They worked with us, recognized where we were at a district. We've talked about professional development and working as a team. And I have to say, as a union group, they were open. And we heard their side, we listened to them. And they wanted what was best for the city. So, I really appreciate all the work they went into that team.
Does anybody else have any comments or thoughts on that? And both of these, we're going to be sending around for people to sign up on them. So, without further ado, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the secretarial contract as presented.
Do I have a second, Wendy? All those in favor? And opposed, none. So, that motion carries. And then, last but not least, we have, will they vote on the city agreement? We're not really taking a vote on that because we're waiting for that. Because we don't really have the full information to do that. So, we'll move on to old and new business. So, we're going to be sending these around, and if everybody could sign off on these. I have a green panel waiting for the union to do. And so, while people are signing that, we have old and new business, superintendent?
Yes. Actually, this one is, this one's intriguing. We were notified early last week that our LCE program, the lease is up on June 30. And this program is affording a situation for students that's quite unique. And I believe that it's been in the district since 2012. And we want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to keep the program thriving. So, we don't want to just sign on to another lease. We want to actually take a step back, look at what we said the mission and vision was for the program. We want to have a comprehensive group come together to really evaluate. We have data points now. We have information. We have ways to gauge our growth and actually look at the potential of growing the program. So, in doing so, I've asked Mr. Pratt to head up a task force starting October 10 of people just really looking at our data points, looking at the program, looking at the lease agreement. Do we stay there? Don't we stay there? Measure our growth, our potential, and then come back to this committee by March with some recommendations.
How much notice do we have to give? I forget the details.
60 days.
That's all?
60 days. So, if we could have a recommendation by March, that would be helpful. So, I'm at, and we don't need an answer today, but if somebody would like to volunteer to be part of that team, we're looking to-
Well, and that's Sue, so maybe we'll, and Ron, so we'll figure out how many people we need. So, right now, we have Ron, Sue, Wendy, Mike.
Okay. So, the team, really, it's, we want to make sure that we have staffing available, admin available. I've asked Kerry Duck to be a part of the team, have Ned facility with the team. The first meeting is October 10 at 4:00. And that would be in the superintendent's conference office.
Can we get the total cost of the program first? I mean, before we even get results?
We have, yes.
People that aren't in the committee, we know the cost is-
Yes. We'll be very transparent with all of it.
Whatever it is.
We already have a packet together with all of that.
Okay.
So, once we pick our team, I've asked Ned Pratt to send out some protocols, expectations, and the questions that we're seeking to answer with this packet. So, that should be coming out within the next few days. So, four are interested?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Sharon. Anybody else have anything under old or new business?
New business?
Yes.
So, on the next agenda, and maybe we just keep it on as a, we're old, because we have to start developing a scope of work for the space needs study. In order to qualify for any, another school or a major renovation or whatever it might be, we need to first do the space needs study. We haven't done one since probably just, since the last time we did the high school. So, we need to get a more updated one. We need to look at all of the schools, we need to look at this program probably while we're at it. And we've added a lot of special needs areas in schools that really weren't built for that. So, we really need to look at those while they may work or appear to work efficiently. Those weren't the original intent. So, a complete look at all our schools, how much space we already have, how many seats there are, what kind of programs are running. But it's, it's, it's not inexpensive anymore. It never was, but it's, it's around $100,000 now to do it. But it's pretty extensive. But a lot of it is going to be based on the scope, if we want to add things to a typical scope of, so we can get a sample from another school district or from the state on a space needs study that, or a couple of them that other people did as a beginning point, and then add in the kinds of things. So, I'd like to keep it on the agenda so people start thinking about the sorts of things that you want on there. So, the finished document is really ours, rather than, you know, just a boilerplate one that, you know, school districts might use and change a few things around and send it out. But this is a real opportunity for us. And remember, the, you know, 2020 census will be out soon. We have enrollment fluctuations changing drastically. So, this is a really perfect opportunity for us to take a look at our school buildings and our facilities and go from there. And I think somebody brought up at one of the last meetings, the state had come up and done an evaluation on our wall of buildings. At one point, they had come up with a team of people and looked at all our buildings. I don't think we ever got a report back.
Chris said that the other day.
Yeah. I don't think we ever got the report. I went back and looked at our end, and I never found the report. And so, what they did is they came up with a team of people, and they evaluated all of our facilities. That was based on the fact that, yeah, you qualified for this, but you don't. And I think a lot of it's how we get the roost on and all. But we never actually got the report saying, you know, this is what you need. So, all of that put together will give us a good scope of work. So, we did it. You know, the people that did the work will be working specifically for us and not off a boilerplate. So, we're getting the outcome we want.
Great, thank you, Dean. For other old or new business, I know we had talked about the MASCE conference coming up. And if there's anybody else who is interested in going, even if you're only going for, you know, a part of it, please let Chris know. But we do need to select somebody who would be our representative, our delegate from our school system, and it's usually Ron. So, I'd like to nominate Ron. So, you're it?
I will try to do my best.
So, the other thing that needs-
Don't start in trouble, that is.
No, I, I don't try to do any trouble. It's just all of a sudden.
It follows that.
Well, you see- The word try?
You see-
Try.
Sue.
Anyway, it's just that, the problem happens, is that you know how we have all these presentational amendments, you know, we have to vote on them?
Right. So, we're going to need to vote on those. And so, I was going to ask that the superintendent have that on our agenda for our second meeting in October. We should have all gotten our booklets in the mail this week.
Oh, yeah, I did.
But we would need to vote on them in that meeting so that Ron knows the position of our school system. So, when he goes to the delegate meeting, he can represent us well.
And I have to, again, warn you guys, no matter how those amendments, what happens that they try to change the words. And when they start changing words, all of a sudden, everything breaks down. And they start having these, these arguments like-
That's why we send you, Ron.
Yep. I had to start one time. I really did have to start. I, I behaved badly that night, that day.
No.
No, I really did, because I, the six people that were on the podium, I got so upset with them. I said to them, listen, you guys don't want to listen to this crowd? I'll pass a resolution to remove you, all of you. I'm going to start from scratch. You got exactly five minutes to make up your mind.
Ron?
Okay. This is just a film of our-
You're already getting, you're already getting your work done.
Foundation budget.
Yeah, trying to stop. So, yes. But we're sure you'll represent us well, but I do need that on the agenda, so that we can vote on those.
It's those little towns like Sudbury, they're every time, Ron. Every single time. I've been there. Once they realize we're coming on a little ahead, they go right to work with the little towns whaling. It's systematic. I've been there.
We're going to move on soon? Or something that you want to add?
I do. Since Jim Riley is our new assistant superintendent and has a lot of expertise around HR, would we be able to get a list of all the certified employees in the district? We haven't seen one. And I think it's important, if we want to be a high-powered district, we should make sure that we have, you know, staff that are qualified.
So, if we can get that-
In the content area?
In their content area, whatever.
Yes. For what certifications they carry.
Right. I mean, if you're a principal, you need to have a principal for whatever you're in. You're in the charter, you need to.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Motion adjourned.
Awesome. Second?